Into session during our break, I talked with Barry Schulenberger.
Give me the paper.
I'd like to bring the new item to our agenda today, the Ski Hill. So discussion on Ski Hill, Fremont High Rangers. We'll do that after budget assumptions. So that would be in addition to our agenda.
Okay.
And Andy will probably want to stay for that one.
Okay.
He would. So our item before that is our budget assumptions for 2015-2016. Welcome everybody, and I'm really happy to have department heads here that have come. Great, every year we have assumptions, we should be here, but that's good.
A little additional information I can add after the packets are free. This is a narrative from the Fairgrounds about their open request. So we'll get into this later, but I just want to turn off that additional information. So to start this off, this is our first step in creating the 2015-2016 budget, which is our spending plan for that fiscal year. The commissioners, by consensus, help set some goals and priorities specifically for general fund, but also for salaries and things like that that we have union contracts for that spread across general fund. So know that the discussion we're talking about today primarily is a general fund discussion. It does impact some other funds when we're talking about salaries and things like that, but this is specific to general fund. And before we start into every single item on your memo, and we'll just go right down the list of what I asked for consensus on, I wanted to talk a little bit about the draft general fund budget that I prepared. Really, this was created by just copying over from this fiscal year our materials and services, our salaries and our revenues, and making a few minor changes where we knew they needed to occur. Salaries, we know that FERS is going up. Maybe we're not making all the same capital purchases that we did this year, so you kind of change a little bit of the capital expenditure. So on one page, the top says draft 15-16 general fund revenue. So you can see, you know, again, I start really conservative. I think you guys know that after this amount of time, that my conservative estimates sometimes are almost considered worst-case scenario. Not necessarily worst-case here, but just a very conservative estimate. So you can see the comparisons between the 15-16 estimate, which puts general fund at 7.4 million, and the 14-15 budget, which was 7.6 million. You can see the primary difference there is in that general department, which is taxes and beginning fund balance, and then also some grants. Department of Revenue is A and T grant, things like that. So again, I know I start conservative. As information comes in, these numbers typically get better over time. But just to start and just to have in the back of our head, general fund, you know, has the potential of declining just a little bit based on what I'm looking at right now.
And I think that is an excellent way for us to go.
To start. So again, just to explain this page in a little bit more detail. Again, just general fund, and then the departments are listed on the left. So obviously, most of our general fund money is beginning fund balance and PILT and taxation. So in that general department is where the primary revenue shows. Other departments bring in grants, and then they also bring in dollars for services they're providing. So you can see those local resources and state and federal resources by department. Then you can also see the difference out on the follow, right-hand column, which shows you I didn't make any changes to any of those numbers. I just copied that right over. So that's, again, a very conservative estimate of how our money might come in for general fund. And then the next page is how might that get spent? So again, this general fund has to balance, so starting with that revenue, copying over salaries, materials and services, and making changes where we know changes will occur. It has the potential to look like presented. Again, since we showed general fund declining 135,000, the expenses would decline 135,000. This scenario right here makes that change in contingency and transfers. We transferred a lot of money this year to capital projects and things in 103. Some of those will be complete, so, you know, we'll see what the lead is moving forward. And we also see a decline in capital, where there was software purchased in other departments. You know, if that software purchase is complete, we should see capital go down in those areas as well.
So on your contingency, unappropriated ending fund balance, is that 7,630? That's sort of positive, it's going to be more? It's always confusing for we have negatives and positives somewhere. I read that as a positive, that we'll have more money there than my.
Yeah. Yes, because the 14-15 total is 1.147. The 15-16 total is 1.155.
I thought you just said that's where it's going to impact us in contingency and ending fund balance.
I think I said transfers and capital.
Transfers and capital.
So in contingency, if you go down to the bottom of the contingency column, you see the 14-15 total, it was 247,000. So there is a difference in contingency of 17,000. But the ending fund balance is increasing, and I'm.
By 25,000.
By 25,000, and so that'll be a discussion today on.
Both of them.
What, yeah, yeah, exactly. So this is just what the potential could look like.
And then so the Sheriff's Department could see $74,000 less than half this year was looking at this.
Yeah, the Sheriff's Department budgeted significant dollars in software. And so if that capital expenditure doesn't occur, I think it was about 75,000. So that's the.
You weren't here, but we had discussion earlier, so that will probably change at some point.
Again, I know all of these numbers change as information come in through the budget process. This is just a really quick snapshot overview of estimates. Year to year, our budgets don't have significant changes. So there are some estimates and approximations we can make, just looking at current numbers.
It's a good starting point, just to get a sense for revenue and expense.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so that's the snapshot. And now let's go item by item on our memo. If you're ready. So the first assumption that I ask for guidance on and consensus is our PILT payment that we received from the Department of Interior, the payment in the middle of tax. Historically, we have budgeted about 645,000, which is the old, I don't even know if I say old. It was the appropriation level that was in, that was appropriated before the fully funding legislation was passed. And so every year we look at, are they going to extend the fully funding appropriation level? So I like to have some guidance on what you would like to see as a number for that PILT payment.
I like the 645.
I guess it is for discussion. Didn't we get word that it is funded this next year?
Well, this is for the following year, so.
This is the payment we can receive in June of 2016.
Yeah, so for budgeting purposes, we don't have a clue. I mean, we may know before budget if they do a fully funded, long-term extension. But right now, there's some, they're.
It's a conservative concept at this time.
Yeah.
When's the last time of one was fully funded?
About four years ago.
Forty-five.
We've seen also the scenario where they might fully fund it, but they don't really set payment until. It was really close, maybe in the June one year that made these payments.
I'm comfortable with 645.
Okay, so.
What do you think?
Well, we're the ones that get hit with the.
Well, if it gets funded more, that's icing on the cake. If it don't get funded more, this is what we have.
And again, just to reiterate, this is not set in stone by any means. This is just a starting point, as time moves on and information changes. We know that our budget document evolves and resolutions occur and changes.
And maybe to address, and I, Mr. Winter will address it however, but he wants to. If we were to change that to something that looked like fully funding, I would only want to go there is if we set that other 450 or 500,000 aside where we don't really plan on spending it, you know, built in the budget, then we would have some flexibility. But I just don't want to, you know, looking at the budget and saying, we've got 500,000 here when we have no clue.
You just sell lying candy ahead of time.
I will go with 645, a little bit reluctantly, but we do have time to change that because of, I really do believe that the track record is showing that we're getting funded. I agree with you, if we put it in there at the full funding amount, then we need to have, build some reserves and some other things there that shows where that money would be and be held. That way, it's much more transparent to make sure that we have it. That's just, that's the way things have been. I don't, Naco's back there right now, who's.
Well, I think we'll have, by the time we start budget hearings, budget procedures, I think we'll have a fairly good idea of what history looks like.
So I hear 645. Going, I'm just going twice, okay. The next item is the unappropriated ending fund balance. This is money that by, if we choose to budget this figure, by budget law, it cannot be transferred by resolution or used through a supplemental budget unless necessitated by a qualifying emergency. So it's a forced savings account until your fiscal operations begin the next year. You know, it's setting money aside so you can make all those fixed cost payments until your major revenue comes in. Our major revenue that comes in first during the fiscal year is November taxes. So we have to fund July, August, September and October with money we still have available. As our payroll increases, with both payroll and then, you know, yeah, exactly, benefits on top of that, we are seeing a lot of costs in those months, July, August, September and October, without a lot of revenue to support it. So I think I've been saying this for a few years. 900,000 obviously is meeting our needs, but I think at some point in time, we will need to increase that because our fixed costs are increasing. And so I state that general fund costs less income for the July through September period was a million and 25,000. So we had a million dollars go out the door between July and September.
Of this past.
Yeah, netting out our revenue.
So what's your comfort over on the 900,000?
Ryan's asking about 945,000.
To me, it just seems pretty. I mean, it just, we know our fixed costs are going up, so you've got to have something there available to make all those payments. I definitely don't want to be the budget officer or even the treasurer when general fund has to borrow money from another fund to make payroll. I don't know that I want to be making that resolution in that interfund loan proposal.
Well, we shouldn't put ourselves in that scenario.
Yeah, so even with, you know, our 900,000 last year, general fund's low balance in October was 1.16 million. Yeah, we're still making payroll, we're still doing what we need to, just at some point in time.
Clothes are in the last three years, July, when was there any fund balances at the general fund?
Because of our conservative PILT payment and, you know, our budgeting there, it's been around 2, 2.2. Yeah.
So we're, our bill's pretty useful for that.
Yeah, so having that 2.5 million, we spent out a million and 25,000 before that.
I'm good with 925, but the real picture is that we're doing quite well and we're about ready to not make our payments tomorrow for another.
No, over time, I think we're going to see that this budget is going to get a little bit more squeezed. We've been very fortunate that budgeting for general fund has been a little less painful than some of us remember, but as time moves on and we do all these fixed costs, it starts squeezing it in.
As you shared with me a while back with the grab, fixed cost goes up and our income is left. So someday in the future, we're going to have.
Okay, so I hear consensus for 925,000?
Yeah.
Okay, contingency. I asked for a target here, and then as information comes in, when we get to the budget meetings in April, we know this amount goes up and down through conversations. So currently, in our fiscal year we're working in right now, we have a contingency level of 247,000. Our historic amount has been somewhere around 200,000 if we have a conservative PILT revenue budgeted. So I think 200,000 seems to have served us well.
Yeah, I agree.
So.
You're going 200,000.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anybody in this room have any thought?
Next is salary quota.
Yeah, so the current union contracts allow a minimum quota of 2.6. Year-over-year CPI for the most recent month, when I had typed this out, was 0.3. So according to contract, the lowest we can go is 2.6. Jay says we probably should plug that number in. Then the question would be, should the quota adjustments be built in for managers as well?
And the answer every year is yes.
Okay, so 2.6.
I mean, that's.
Yeah.
Is 0.3 for the last month or the whole year?
That's year-over-year.
The whole year?
Yeah.
And it could, you know, by the time that the actual date is, March?
It's March.
That could fluctuate a little bit, but there's no way it's going to go higher than 2.6.
I don't see it.
Oh, yeah.
We're not seeing that in any of the prices and things like that. So the next section, we talk about specific reserves. And again, this is general fund related. All of the reserves we're going to talk about right now reside in Fund 103. It's where we try to accomplish our capital projects, but also set aside these reserve dollars. So Oregon budget law allows corporate, municipal corporations to establish one or more reserve funds to be, to hold monies and be accumulated for financing the cost of any service, project, property or equipment which a subdivision has local powers to perform, construct or acquire, et cetera. Not less than every 10th anniversary of the reserve establishment date, the governing body should determine whether the fund will be continued or abolished. So to meet that requirement, I like to talk about those reserves every year. Then they're in minutes somewhere that we are confirming that they should reside or we are saying, no, let's be done with that reserve. Reserves do not get appropriated. So when we adopt the budget, we adopt and appropriate every other category except reserves and the ending fund balance. So every year, these reserve amounts can fluctuate, okay? We have the ability to do that. So also know that this is where we have talked about these reserves in the past. So the reserves that have been set aside come out of consensus at this meeting. It doesn't mean that they can't change as we move forward and, again, get different information or see a need somewhere. The first one is the facilities reserve. In 14-15, we set that amount at 150,000.
Looking for discussion on that, who we're looking at at the library every month. And so that we will need to probably use those reserves, possibly some within this next budget year.
Okay, so let's keep this conversation specifically about the money you want to save, not the projects that we are going to construct or move forward on. So this is specifically those dollars that we are saving, that our target is we're saving it, we're not going to expend it the next fiscal year, it's our savings account. And then through the budget process and the information, Fund 103 will show the expenditures to conclude all those projects.
Okay, so with that said, there's going to be possible expenditures this next year that I'm not sure we need as high a facility reserve because that would be safe enough for another year. As far as we can keep it, keep it there if we know some potential projects in the future.
Well, I'm just trying to imagine. I agree, and when I saw that, I had a question. I was thinking 100,000, maybe 125 to 100,000. But I'm thinking about our overall budget when we get into that, and I know we don't need to mix that in right now, but we're, historically, we end up balancing the contingency. I do see some opportunities worse than having a fairly significant contingency all of a sudden.
The nice thing about the reserves, even though it's not appropriated through the official language, you can do a supplemental budget and use those dollars. So the reserves also are for the failure that we didn't expect.
Unperceived.
Yeah, the elevator that, you know, if, if, if our budget is pretty accurate and we know we're going to do this project and that project and have these needs, and now something that we've seen happens, you can tap the reserves. So it is, it is, I think, a good idea to have a reserve set aside for facilities for the unknown.
I agree, but I think you hit on the key point, the unknown, as opposed to the unplanned properly, you know, type of thing. We've got to do good planning so that we don't have a perceived emergency just because we want to do something.
And contingency can be used for emergency things like, instead of having to go through a supplemental budget.
Yeah.
Contingency can be used for emergency, also be used for unforeseen opportunities.
Well, I think as a county, not to slow the conversation down, but I'm very pleased and proud of where the departments being so respectful of that contingency as to not, you know, not consider to get out a jail-free card anymore. And so, you know, as we work to possibly lessen that and balance to contingency, I think is this the best way to move forward.
To your knowledge of what facilities do you have up or down on that 150?
I maintain it, I keep it the same.
If we don't need it, estimate it saved for next year's budget.
The same point we can make in our contingency, so.
The reserve just has a few more strings attached. Where you can see that's.
We have to focus a lot of reserves designed for us for a future project. It's what it's really designed for, and I'd like to sort of keep the boundaries around it so that the reserves, whether we're here or whoever's here, is looking at a future project for the need that way myself. And I put in, I can go with several different numbers, but I'm looking at our facilities guy here and trying to think of future things that we may be needing to do here. So this facility reserve, can it be, that's just general fund, that can't be other county properties?
No, it's county, it's county-wide, this is just where we reside.
So with that, with some other things that's out there, other potential things that's offered in this courthouse area in our facility, whether it's an airport or railroad or something else, I would like to keep it up there pretty good for the future, based around that we're going to do some deferred maintenance. We're trying to get caught up, and we're going to continue to do that over the years. I'm good with leaving it at 150. With that thought, that really that's where this board's been working is to fix what deferred maintenance and the work that's been, not going to be done for many years. How do you feel?
Well, I guess I'd ask Andy just really quickly, how does that compare to budgeting for a capital project in those deferred areas? You know, it's one thing to have a reserve that you don't intend to, it's a savings. It's another to build a budget that you actually put money into a capital project.
Well, this, remember, all of this discussion right now is a target. If we find out during the budget process and with the information coming in that we're going to need some additional resources available to make our projects happen, then, okay, let's talk. Let's talk about what our reserves are here. I mean, we will, we will definitely discuss all of these again. So this is just our target, this is our, kind of our, our goal if we could make it happen.
Let's put 150,000.
Okay.
How about 150,000?
Yeah.
Okay, the next one is the Fair Board Roping Club. We actually receive these dollars through this club. We haven't received any additional donations, but the Fair, the Roping Club expects to see this set aside for the future if they can figure out some kind of facility. So I think we maintain that exact amount.
Just on the Roping Club, that was in some years back, they wanted to do arena. There was actually several entities, the Rock Shop also contributed some, another.
Optima Shop.
Optima Shop. Those last two have said to free up the money and put it into general maintenance at the Fairgrounds. So those money went. The Roping Club, Ronner was a key player there. I asked him if he wanted to free that money out from this arena concept and put it into maintenance, and his preference at that time was to retain it for an arena as such. We respected at that time.
I was on the Fair Board at the time with Diane Adams and several others, and they brought that board to go towards a building fund or an arena or for the. They had built up quite a bit, but during tough times, the Fair Board introduced some of those funds. But they're, they definitely want to just fill all those dollars to stick there. So that's an appropriate reserve to how the Roping Club has expanded one of their money to go for.
So if a project comes through next year, and if it's in the middle of the year and they find some kind of grant to start working on a facility like this, we can release this reserve. The onsite program reserve is mandated by the state for our DEQ program. $10,000 is the level that they require us to set aside. We have not fully funded that $10,000 quite yet. I should have looked at that number before I came up. Boy, I bet we're six to 7,000. And then there will be a discussion of now what happens with that, that fee for the onsite program, once we fully fund this reserve. But 10,000 is what we need to show as a reserve available for that program. The EMS vehicle is for emergency services. The EMS vehicle is for emergency services. I think it's kind of a mobile command center. I believe there was a five thousand dollar donation made several, several years ago. I'd have to do the research and understand the organization that donated that. But the, I think there still is the idea that that could be a useful piece of equipment down the road if the opportunity becomes available.
To my knowledge, those, those dollars even originated before my time. They've been carried forward for many, many years, and they are reserved. I would encourage the sheriff and Lieutenant Havel to research that, see if they can write a guideline to this, get that put on the ground this next year.
So Commissioner, just to help my memory, the five or six year ago purchase of a mobile command center, was there any reason we didn't use those dollars then?
That was, that was several years ago. Those were Title III, was what those dollars were used for. If I remember this one right, this is for an actual vehicle. And I may be wrong, it's quite old and...
Over ten years?
Oh, yes. Yeah, like sixteen or better.
So where does it go?
Fifteen or sixteen, so I would reach out to the sheriff and all of that.
Is there a, is there a definition that's known of what vehicle is? I mean, is that ATV boat pickup?
It was...
Or is there a...
You know, we will just talk about, you know, right now, because we don't know. When you research it, you'll find.
Okay.
I thought it was a motorhome that had a remote station to move, like on a search or unless he got that to the Title III. I know they run it for...
Is it a title?
So it was more or less just a command post?
Yeah. I, I, one of them, if this, I don't know if this one.
This is, this is the vehicle way back when, the command center was like a trailer that was that set up, which was approved through Title III. Anyway, so that one there, I guess what I'm saying is, is if they can find a way to leverage those dollars, it's within the grant guidelines, that one would go in this next year, it could be spent. If not, we'll carry it forward by the, I don't know if there's a timeframe for things.
Nobody, I think, I think if we, I'd rather budget it be spent instead of budgeting it as a reserve. So I would say we're going to zero out this reserve and we will plug five thousand dollars in as either a transfer out, it'll be out of, a transfer out of this fund to wherever it's appropriate to make something happen if that information comes in. If the information doesn't come in, that we're going to make a purchase and that money stays in this fund, it just won't be spent. Okay, but it also won't be reserved. It's not going to be saved for a future purchase, we're going to do something then.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So when you say it in your budget, Sheriff, that's money that's not for normal operation to be a specific line item. Or is that why you're saving them, or are you going to put it in a different fund, standalone fund?
Once we understand how it's going to be spent, we'll figure out those logistics. So I'm not going to, it's not going to show up anywhere quite yet until we have any information on the purchase of the project.
Well, it's, it can be just back into general fund, it's not necessarily goes to the sheriff's budget unless we decide.
But, yeah.
Didn't we just...
I thought those were dedicated dollars to this.
Well, I was going to say, start the discussion with some type of donation, that that's where it came from, or...
I actually think it was a grant.
Well, let, as you said earlier, let's research it.
Yeah, offset five thousand.
The next item is the emergency power, uninterrupted power supply system. I think Dave has information on.
Well, we've been working, I've talked with Lieutenant Havel, and we've, we've been doing research of backup power for, for the courthouse, so it's, it's in the works. I think we need to bring it up and we need to move forward on it this fall.
So we need to put it into the actual budget to be spent.
So the reserve will go to zero. We will not reserve any dollars for this project.
Yeah, several years ago, when we had that real bad snowstorm, we was out of power here for multiple hours. We was at the verge of transporting our prisoners to Katy Falls.
We did.
Because we did not have a backup.
So the, um, next one's the air handling system, and I think that's the same thing. We've got that project in the works, and so this project, we will not reserve any dollars for next fiscal year, it will be spent. So we'll move up into an expenditure category. The next one is the North Lake Annex. Last year, we chose to set aside twenty-five thousand dollars for any kind of potential structure up there in the North Lake area.
So my take on that, however, the discussion happened, I guess I wasn't paying enough attention, but I believe we need to set aside money for a future facility of some type, additions, traction, whatever, but I don't think, unless Dave knows, I don't think we know what the next one might be.
I initiated that last year to start saving up some money so that in ten years or fifteen years, we'll have enough money to meet a potential grant for building a new, respectable annex or whatever. It's to set aside money to have a handful of match.
And I, I agree with that. I just don't know that we need to say it's for sure going to be the North Lake Annexes that we'll, we do as our next project.
Not the next project, multiple years out.
Well, that's what I mean, the next project that we'd be saving for, for, for multiple years saving, it may be some other facility.
I, I just had a question, how come the North Lake Annexes is separated out? Wouldn't that fall under the facilities of Lake County in general?
That, that's the point I'm trying to make, is that...
We can put it underneath facilities, it's just how do we track growing a match? If we're not identifying.
I, I think at this point, I, myself, under, having the facility reserves covers it, I think, Ken, as you work forward and look at, at what our need is, what we have, and the potential of the building we have here, and then if we're working towards the CDVG grant, or if we're working towards, once we find out exactly what our needs and what we want to do, then we might make a more specific plan, but I think we're...
You even indicated what need to be someplace else, so I don't mind taking it out of the North Lake. My emphasis is for not you, Commissioner Shounder, myself, and today, but ten years when they had to have a new board, you have some idea of having some money someplace for a future.
And I, I totally agree with you on that.
Totally.
Do you, I'm just going to ask a question, honest question. Do you feel like the communities in the North Lake area like to see something like this specifically? I don't know. You guys, you guys deal with that much more than I do, so I, I'm just not sure if there's some kind of expectation to see something.
Well, before we did an upgrade on the system as far as the sightings and windows, the annex up there was a major interest of the community to have something respectful.
Now, that's been...
Well, we facelifted, I won't use the word lipstick, but still, the structure is sound, but it's not really configured much, but yes, there was a, an express, I've heard many times from folks, we need something that is of modern now, you know, something that they can be proud of, proud of, and we can be proud of.
We've, we've invested a lot into the structure that we have there and brought it up to a lot of standards, from parking lot all the way out back to heating cooling windows, everything electric. So we, we've extended the life of that quite a bit, the configuration of it, we've even changed some of that a little bit. I think it's primed to look for the future, like you say, Ken, and, and look for that we grow up there, but I think we're pretty good there on that building right now.
That's what I like, I like the whole idea of a future facilities reserve. And for folks, whether it's in the north end or the central part or the southern part, that want to know what we're reserving that for, that's when we can have a discussion as opposed to a specific building.
Would you like to see the facility reserve set at a hundred and seventy-five thousand and then zero out the North Lake Annex?
Yes.
I would give it a hundred and fifty, but if, if the board wants to...
Well, given the fact that we started that reserve down there, I, I'm of the mind we should bump that to a hundred and seventy-five as well.
Along as it's, people in the future, meaning not us, will have some track record of its facility, may not just be in North Lake or something.
I, um, will try to ensure that these reserves are well-defined of a narrative that shows up in the budget book, because at least there you have some written documentation happening those budget books are required to stick around.
Well, and I think, Ann, as we explain this in the budget meetings with the, the full budget group, I think our, our process last year of taking the minutes and inserting those into the budget books, it's going to, it's going to really frame the opportunity to have it explained going forward. We'll capture that at that time as well.
Okay, sounds good. The last reserve that was set aside in this fiscal year in fourteen fifteen was twenty-five hundred dollars for the canine drug dog program. Late in the thirteen fourteen fiscal year, that purchase was made, and so I recommend you zero out that reserve.
Yep.
Are there other specific reserves that come to mind that you would like to see established?
I have a question, guys, on the, on the dog reserve. So is this going to abolish that program in the future, or there will be a replacement cost to that dog if we continue this program throughout, and so...
That, Paul, was a grant that was, went out, that was acquired, I believe it's through Walmart, a one-time grant, that twenty-five hundred dollars, and it was prison reserve, it wasn't able to be leveraged.
Okay.
Right then, and so if there's an ongoing cost to be able to have a canine program, then your guys' budget needs to reflect that.
And I know we, we did create a line item in the one twenty, I just didn't know if, from a reserve standpoint, if we wanted to continue this program in the future, there may or may not be grant dollars available for that.
Well, I guess that's, no.
Well, exactly. I just wanted to educate us, because I wasn't involved in that.
Of course, I'm getting guys recording going against, I'm going to be smart aleck here, I think you have to just put a tax during line item and, and we can continue the program or...
My thoughts always, in the future, a dog only lives so long, and if we source, seeing a need to replace a dog, it is included in your budget at that time.
So the only reason it was ever created as a reserve is because it came in through a grant source and...
Yeah.
Okay.
Donation. So to, to be clear, when this, this dog was purchased at the end of thirteen fourteen, general fund covered the cost over and above what donations had come in. So the reserve stayed there even though general fund covered the cost in one. I think it was in one twenty, I'd have to look back. Okay, I'm moving on, no, no specific request for reserves at this point in time?
Not at this point in time.
So we...
Pardon me? You buy a drone?
A drone.
Two or three of them.
This year, we asked that open request to be submitted significantly earlier than we had in the past, and I don't know if that scared people off or what, but we only received two. The courthouse basement storage shelving and fencing, I asked Dave to, to say that's an open request because I wasn't sure we really hammered that project and that cost out, knowing that we have a lot of other projects going on. So I just wanted to include that as an open request discussion. And then the second one is updating remodeling the fairgrounds, grandstands, bathrooms. And so you got a little bit of information in your packet, and then board member Nancy Albertson provided a little more narrative.
On, on the first one, I believe that needs to just be built into a budget, either come out of capital or whatever, this, this is something that we've pretty much gave direction for many years, and we're just now, it's going to happen, but I just soon see that one budgeted, needs to just happen.
I'd like a clarification on the fencing, in the basement.
Well, as we, as we separate each storage, it'll be with the cyclone, it'll be visible, it won't be behind boards, it'll be laid out where easy access and you have more control of the space that you have.
Thank you. Secure.
Security, right?
Yep. A little safer than the way it is today.
Except chicken wings.
Yeah.
Or pallets.
Pallets, yeah.
Fairgrounds remodel is another one that come forward, and maybe would I get many open requests because of me, but I want open requests to be absolute, know everything about them, and this one there still seems quite general, because we end up with later on in the year saying that that wasn't enough money, or we're going to need more money and all that. So my thoughts to the fairgrounds and the fair board for this is, have you found out what the permits are going to cost, what the wiring is going to cost, what everything's going to cost, and is that an accurate amount?
My understanding is that we had solicited contractors to get the cost, and contractor would include all the components and parts.
So that, that would be complete, done and over with, we wouldn't be halfway through the year, it comes in, well, we forgot about this, and it wouldn't happen.
So, to answer your question, Commissioner and I agree with that, that whole concept, we just had the discussion earlier today about something similar, is that when we go to budget time, that they provide us with that, that these, we've received quotes, as Commissioner Kessler said, and here is the, the cost, and our open request will, will cover that.
So I'm good going forward with open requests, but I, I'm on complete projects, not conceptional projects, this may be the project, or this will be the minimum, budget really going to cost because of, as a board commissioner, we don't like have to go back over halfway through the year.
But I think we all agree it needs to be done, this project.
Oh, absolutely, that's a great project. Great project, and sponsors, enough money, if it gets completely done.
If not, then I know an angry man out there that can put his own hand to it.
So Leanne, being the new manager out there, wasn't real confident in her knowledge of the open request process, and I had kind of neglected to really get her up to speed. So next year, she will have these projects ready to go, but this was a, oh my gosh, you need it tomorrow, kind of scenario, not quite that quick, but I'm going to take the blame and the ownership on her not having a complete project to you. She was not fully informed on what all those open request emails meant, and so...
But, but today, we're able to put a placeholder there, and she has kind of been able to get to what the final numbers would be.
Yes.
I'll take some of that blame, because I've kind of said, you need to go see Ann about the budget and everything, and I didn't push, she was busy in Old Swamp, I didn't push her past it.
The other thing about this project that I, could be a possibility, we approved a breezeway project to occur out there this fiscal year. We are not transferring those dollars until they're spent, but there is an appropriation level there for a capital improvement at the fairgrounds. I guess the potential is, if the breezeway, number one, doesn't cost what we had anticipated or changes, and doesn't happen, we've already appropriated about twenty-five thousand to go to the fairgrounds for a capital improvement. This could potentially happen a little bit earlier if that information came through and was approved. Just throwing that out there as a...
We save that information.
The breezeway project information...
If it gets down and it comes in under budgets.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, when we're looking at breezeway, the original concept, Commissioner and I both worked on it, as well as a previous one, was to have a closed, between building one and building two, have a closed breezeway, with roll-up doors, so you drive through, whatever, but a lot of, we contracted, it had to be architecturally designed, so had contracted from Key Falls Mobile, and you cannot get it to the E D A. E D A, you got different elevation between the two buildings, and the slope and everything had to be thrown up, dah dah dah. What it really came down to, the new concrete had to be, it's nine inches difference, had to be flat, go into building one, a turnout area, then another slope, and that would take up a lot of space. So the emphasis now, when we're at the time around land, I'll call it Leanne, I assume, is to pull it, well, back up a little bit. What we do now, we put it four by four, post across.
Car for reverse back down.
Yeah, and we throw some blue car over it, kind of tacky.
Literal.
Yeah, but we're looking at maybe just getting the engineer back over, because anything that's the engineer, just putting a work line, and then if we need to close it in on a Monday night during Irish dinner.
No, you guys have expended money on engineering, has that been transferred over for that project?
Yeah, we had to get it re-engineered on the different concept.
Why does money transfer, you know? Do you think that project's going to happen within this budget here?
It'll probably be August or something, or after the, I'll be pressing for it this year.
So we need to carry that forward, plus addition, then.
If we don't, between now and July, we're.
There's potential to do the bathroom with them, there's some, certain bathrooms that there is.
Can they get the bathrooms before fair, before, throws us after all over, maybe they'll have them in twenty-six.
We hope to have it before this fair.
Okay.
If we approve the dollars in open request.
That's right, this is next year's budget, it'll probably be next year.
Well, it'll be before this fair, but there's no reason why the fair board and the fair manager couldn't have it out to bid July one, and done before the fair.
Like I said, there's appropriations for capital expenditure at the fairgrounds this fiscal year, so if the breezeway project doesn't move forward in this fiscal year, but the bathroom project gets approved in K nine, you're appropriated, you could do that.
So you could do the bathrooms right now, today?
Yeah.
Same as our board, we was kind of talking earlier about the, some other projects.
So, I guess what you got to say, maybe if we appropriate for a specific project, but go ahead and do a different one?
If it's approved, I'm saying if the information is in and it's approved, we have seen capital projects and capital expenditures change.
Shift.
Shift.
So come the budget time, we approve this open request, then we have the flexibility, because we have already identified a certain number of dollars for this year's expense, and it would be kind of switching with them, but they'd both be approved projects.
Yeah, so next year, you would carry forward what could not be complete this year, plus the breezeway.
Yeah.
But right now, there's twenty thousand dollars sitting, or approximately that, in the appropriated category.
Yeah, I just don't want to start approving open request, and then that open request changes, and it's a different project, but that money gets a spin on, that's almost what I thought I was hearing, was that.
Well, you would.
Funding upfront, one or the other.
Yeah.
But the breezeway, we've done, we just don't know the time, and if we prove.
Well, we have something for approval.
Yeah, my test is, this starts July one, we've still got twenty thousand dollars for the breezeway, it's going to be like to be done before June thirty.
Okay, so I'm good with this open request, can we go ahead and write it in at the thirty thousand, this could change as the project gets more defined by the.
Okay, did I just make a comment here that, you know, we know that we have several projects that are ongoing and continuing, so as budget documents and information are submitted, we'll make sure that there's appropriations available for the remainder of those programs in next fiscal year. We have several, but that could be a factor.
One of those, I would assume would be the.
Yeah, especially if there's ongoing discussion on actual figures, that that might be, but yes, that's an ongoing project.
That was an open request, originally it was an open request, and so I guess there should be something coming to the board of what the next, not just written into the budget, that would change the schedule for request, or what's on the cost, do it within the budget, to just put substantial, substantial in there, so.
I think as we sat right in a maze here, jumping here, some of the few million dollars in that open request are being expended on some of the areas that have been discussed that need to be done in there inside there, but the complete completion is going to be more than we've got in our budget.
Well, I guess what my point is, is originally it was open request, and you have to get started, there's not enough money, and then that just gives you to get a jail free card and just finish it in the next budget year without approval.
Oh, yeah.
That's, if I was a department head, I'd be looking at bringing projects forward all the time that I get forward, finish the next year, something that substantially.
That's what I do with fairgrounds.
It's what it sounded like almost.
At first, at that, we took care of the D eight budget before you got in, so we don't have really time to address it.
So, Anne, I appreciate, I think that probably the Commissioner needs to know, I wrote down, I guess about those projects are, projects are, that I don't know what they all are, that are continued to this next year, I know the evidence room, I wrote down.
Well, I looked at those, and Anne, you wrote that statement, so you can tell me if I was right when I read it, it was more things that we budgeted to do, and we haven't spent all of it, we're going to be spending some of it in the next budget here, it wasn't that we ran out of money on a project, and we're now going to have to budget more to do such as the evidence building, that's what we're continuing, and we're carrying those dollars forward to complete it in the next budget year, potentially.
Yeah, I mean, but I'm going to say that we've seen both occur. We've seen projects come in higher than we anticipated, and through the budget process and through conversations, clear up to adoption, in fact, the day before adoption, we changed to allow for a project to be completed. So I, if, whatever parameters you guys want to set on projects that are now coming in higher than estimated, let's just be clear on what we want to see with those.
Well, I think that, I think we need to have a presentation, maybe to the board in an open public meeting, and just for everybody to understand why it was different. Not that it isn't legit.
Right.
Not that it doesn't need to be done, but just, we made it very open when we approved it to start with, let's make it there, but I'm worried if something's going on that.
So it sounds good, and I'm sure those conversations will occur, but those documents are going back to me.
Yes, I agree.
So I think that that will be a census or some decision.
Yep.
So, we also talked about admin fee calculations during assumptions, the admin fees are designed to reimburse general fund for the services that general fund provides to all county departments and funds. It pays for things like the audit, the budget preparation, information technology, accounts payable, payroll, county council, treasury, management things. Last year, we did significant work on making sure that this was fair and reasonable and equitable, I hear that word a lot. So this year, it maintains all of those same policy statements we made last year, we're looking at historical payments from the thirteen-fourteen fiscal year, that year's complete, so I start with that number, what did we spend? I know what we spent in thirteen-fourteen for these services, and then it's allocated the same way we decided last year. Sometimes it's based on time spent, sometimes it's based on actual checks written, sometimes it's based on a percentage of that revenue compared to the whole county. The one change I looked at this year in an ongoing effort to be as accurate and fair as possible to information technology, as you know, it is changing how we are paying for those services and how we're using them. This year, we have information technology, it's computers, it's phones, it's internet, it's everything we're trying to use there. So I asked for some help on trying to understand how to allocate that, it made sense to allocate phones based on phone lines, that's pretty easy to look at, and allocate straight across the board there. Same with the internet, so our internet monthly bill, makes sense to allocate that based on who's hooked up to the internet and using it. Then, as far as the service contract with Actec, they looked at how many devices per department they are currently servicing, so whether it's laptops and PCs, or servers and switches and things like that, and then they also had some of those devices, if it's a printer, for instance, probably take less time than maybe the server. And so this result in the, it's in computers on the column, but again, it's all of the information technology, is the result of that process, kind of getting a little bit more accurate with, number one, the cost, and then also the services that are being provided. On the admin fee breakout, you can see the fourteen-fifteen, well, you see what the fifteen-sixteen budget total would be, the next column from that is kind of the percentage of the overall, and then next to that is what the fourteen-fifteen budget showed, so you can see a comparison. For the most part, we're going down, except those departments that we did not understand their technology use until this process went through on technology. So if you look, well, I can't really look at bottom line, remember, in general fund, we don't trade general fund dollars, and then we also do not take money from reserve funds, however, they're all included in the formula to determine true shared costs.
I have to be honest, I did not look at this when I got this packet that closely, I want to definitely look at it some more, but what I'm seeing, you know, here initially.
I thought Rick would be jumping up and down, to be honest, I'm surprised he's as quiet as he is.
I think I'm missing my European handbag.
If you would like this as a topic on a future meeting, I can bring it back, or if you'd like it as a topic during our budget meetings, I can talk about it again then too. Right now, this is the.
Anne, the total of fourteen-fifteen, that's the year we're in right now?
Yeah.
That's what you're drawing, so you go back two columns, which one is, are we budgeting for fifteen-sixteen?
The total, that is two columns to the left, so instead of paying sixty-nine-eight, you're going to pay sixty-eight-nine.
I just didn't get there yet.
You saved some money there.
That might really pay off, that million dollars that's going to come out of reserves this year.
Gets close, doesn't it?
But, no, I'm happy that, I was happy that we did go through this, and, you know, we really spent some time last year adjusting this, and got kind of more in line with other candidates across the state, besides the actual cost, but.
My best comparison would be to pull the jail and the sheriff together, they have more employees than we do, they have high cost operations, they're sixty-six, four-seventy-nine combined, a year of sixty, go that over, sixty-nine, sixty-eight.
They're going to go up to seventy-nine.
They're going to go up to seventy-nine, so they have, based on employees, they have a lot of vehicles, they have quite a bit of computer stuff, they use legal counsel a lot, all of it, that's only general fund, I'd like to come close to comparing, compare almost to the same as them with less employees. Your account payable is probably quite a bit more than, it takes a lot more than twenty-nine hundred. That's all I would, that's the only thing I'd done on it, was try to go to comparables.
I'd definitely like to visit some more on this later time, I'd definitely look at it a little bit.
I have a half-time meeting.
Moving down the mental, cutting into our last break. What's that?
We get lunch?
Only if you want. Okay, so the last few things are just informational or for discussion, I think you can probably breeze through this, we've talked about them before and just never heard Stacks question. Number one, is there any kind of suggestions for budget format, layout requests, or medium changes?
Good.
The next question, again, when we went through that new Gatsby statement, I'm not going to forget the number of the Gatsby recommendation, our audits automatically combines funds that only, or specifically use general fund resources, so if a significant amount of a fund is supported by general fund, Gatsby requires that to be rolled into a general fund statement, a general government fund statement. So those funds that we currently maintain outside of general fund but are primarily supported by general fund dollars are the vehicle pool, general communications, the general insurance fund, now jail assessment, and of course, the landfill is also one. So I'd just like to ask the question, if, you know, there is a desire or a need, which I don't know the need's there, but if the desire is to bring those as departments into general fund, we can still maintain the accounting accuracy of understanding exactly what those programs cost as a department in general fund, that now you don't have the fund requirements as far as your appropriations language and things like that for the fund, or even being restricted by resolutions that can happen in a fund because of the ten percent rule? If they become part of general fund, actually, they have a little bit more leeway, they're now in general fund where the appropriations are quite more significant than what you look at, for instance, the insurance fund. So the insurance fund is.
So be a little more specific into general fund, would it be a department-specific?
Yeah.
And so the easiest one for me to relate to would be, say, vehicles go by department, so on the materials and services, they would have?
No.
All their.
Actually, we would create, let's pick a number, it might be like Department one-fifty-three, here's your fleets, it's all, it's all one still department, it's not spread out through every department in general fund, it is its own department, but it resides in the overall general fund pie, where right now, it's its own fund, and general fund transfers dollars to that fund for those expenses.
So that would include sort of fuel?
Yeah, so everything, everything now that happens in Fund one-oh-eight, the vehicle pool, it all stays the same, but now it's Department one-fifty-eight, instead of. Instead of fund... One oh one, one fifty eight. One oh eight. It's just, it's like the sheriff department. Now, you have a fleet, you have the vehicle pool as a department in general fund.
Okay, so, what would we see in the budget, I guess? Anne, it would be different with the fuel per department would go to the fleet?
No, I'm not, I'm not...
The department would still have that?
Yeah. I'm not making any recommendations to change how fuel is paid for. I mean, that discussion could occur, too. This, this is as simple as instead of Fund 108, it's now Department 158. Instead of a transfer from general fund going to Fund 108 to do all the operations, you're just in general fund. You don't have to balance the fund anymore. You're a department in general fund.
So, let's go back, just take a step back with that in line with these particular funds. Your statement on admin fees related to general fund, you show everything in here, but a general fund category...
General fund department doesn't trade money. So, the sheriff, right now, we do not show an admin fee transfer from the sheriff in the other department.
So, how do we make up that difference for the admin? If we, just trying to think, Anne, if we, if we were thinking, this might not be a bad idea to make these general fund departments. So, how do we make up the difference in the monies they would be paying?
They're part of the calculation, but we're not transferring the dollars. Dollars just go in a circle right now. If they're a department in general fund, they just stay there.
Right.
They just, it's just budgeted. There's no transfer, the fund doesn't have to balance.
So, like landfill, general funds having to put the admin money in my revenue, but then it goes out the expense side.
Yeah.
So, it's just, that's what he means by the simple of it. I wouldn't have it, but then you never have to give it in the revenue.
Right.
Far as like landfill, your contingency would be bigger then because you're in general fund, is that correct? And far as you said that you could follow the spinning and stuff, what's the difference than what we're doing now? How do you follow that better if it was in general fund?
Not, I wouldn't say better, it's exactly the same. You get a budget variance report right now for Fund 224, you get a budget variance report for Department 160, and it would look the same. You, when you look at your budget variance report for the landfill out of general fund, you don't have to worry about cash anymore because now you're in the overall pie. You don't have to worry about your fund cash. So, and you don't have to worry about the landfill fund balancing. You would budget, this is what I need to operate the landfill. And then, the process of balancing general fund occurs.
And see, half my revenue is my carryover. And, and it really cuts me out there to cut costs to keep that carryover. Although, if I had a year, I had spent it all, I know that it'd be zero coming in, but it is frustrating to have to come up with that carryover every year.
Well, landfill, I haven't got to yet. I pretty much, for discussion, I need more discussion, but I sort of like the way we've been doing it because there's other things that along with landfill that years before, whenever the, all the tax went away and everything. This year keeps us just sort of landfill operations. I guess if you look at the contingency side of it, it'd be a bigger contingency right now with the carryover dollars and the contingency within there. You're always working to stay within that. And we're very lucky where we're at today, but let's say five years down the road and whoever's managed landfill said, well, there's $200,000 in general fund contingency and we're in good shape. We're going to go to that contingency for some landfill operations. I mean, it, it just keeps a separation to stay within that budget. And if it's above and beyond that, emergency, come to the board. Have government board for contingency anyways, but it just sort of gives a, I guess, the operations of landfill, Carter, picture to me. I could be wrong. I don't, Rick, you managed it for years.
Well, I mean, I can see your point, but they'd have to come and get your permission for the use of contingency. You can get out there, but you could get a manager out there that's going to get, that's going to get a little bit loose and we've seen them through the past on expenses and, I mean, it could happen that way. Where you're, when you're source separate, you're going to try to really have to stay in that window. I mean, I mean, that's the only side of it that I see. Either way, it doesn't make many difference.
Well, that's, that's the question I had, Rick, was more or less, what's the pros and what's the cons? Because to me, if you have a budget and you have to manage to that budget, your revenue is the same. I mean, your revenue source is the same regardless of where it's at. And the management of that budget is simply that, managing to, to it.
Yeah, regardless of what he does, it's still going to come for you, you know.
It's all easy to consolidate things when we have money. You hit the bad times and then we go back to which...
It's whatever you guys decide. I mean, I'm, I don't, we've talked about it before, me and Anne.
Whenever we wanted to, I could.
Well, we talked about it before.
When she was...
Departments and everything.
What was your preference?
But, if things get tight...
Same as right now.
Don't care.
I can see pros and cons and both. Nothing more cons than a pros than a general fund, but just because you never know what's going to happen out there, you know, contingency and stuff out there is not very much. But if something did happen, what would you do? Resolution or how could you bail it out?
So, the landfill fund gets caught on that 10% rule. If you're going to do, if you need to bail it out more than that, it is a supplemental budget process. If it's in general fund and you need to bail it out more than that, you have the backing of general fund, so your resolution can be a little bit less time consuming. You know, and you, we can make it happen either way. The thing is, is it, it is solely supported by general fund. So, it, it, it...
It should be there.
It, it, it almost, it just doesn't matter where it, where it sits because it is 100% funded by general fund.
Andy, empty of whatever it is, it should be in general fund if that's what it is.
Well, in the guidance there is to be as transparent as possible. So, if you have general resources that can be used for general purposes, have all of those together in one area. The minute you have a separate fund, you are saying there is a special revenue source for this fund. There is some kind of legislation or restricted money for this special revenue and for this purpose. That's not the case. So, to be transparent, right now, people, you know, would go, oh, well, how is this fund funded? Okay, it is funded from general fund. I don't know what people really look. But in transparency, it would, it should reside in general fund. And so, that's why our audit statements include it in general fund.
We could hit on the transparency for that. I think we're going to have to look at these, and you have several of them here. We're talking landfill, so let's get that one figured out. Or we can go back up to just the list that you have here and then end up with landfill.
Well, we've been talking about landfill, and I was really trying to bring it to you.
Again, I've talked about this because I think, you know, this is my world, this is what I live in, so I like asking these questions. But I've asked this question for three or four years and it's stayed exactly the same. And that's okay.
These questions, thanks for the answers.
And that's how I, and that's the flavor that I took this in. Quite honestly, and I hate it when I suggest we delay, but I don't want to make a decision on it today.
And that's 100%. And so, I might ask it again next year when it comes to what you would budget assumption.
Well, I'm not suggesting next year.
Well, why don't you work with the department head, all the department heads that have these funds to gain that ownership or whatever, so that it's, it's brought to us with ownership of the department heads that have these, these funds?
Okay.
Would be my, my suggestion.
And that's kind of the flavor.
Well, and I, actually, I have some questions on the jail assessment fund. It was my understanding, and I haven't been here since that fund existed, but my understanding was is those dollars cannot be used for standard operations, wages. So, you couldn't absorb that fund into general fund because it would fall under that umbrella.
That's true.
And so, so I, I don't know if that fund's even eligible to go that route.
So, I think no action is appropriating and talk with department heads in the future.
There was a lot of, the court system went through a huge change in Senate bills of how courts and jails are funded. Recently, it changed our law library, our mediation. It changed the nature of the jail assessment money. It is now available for operations, general operations. In fact, we don't even get the same revenue source anymore. It automatically goes into the jail. What's remaining in the jail assessment is the justice reinvestment dollars, which also was broad in terms of use. After the justice reinvestment dollars are spent, the jail assessment's going to actually probably go away.
I agree with Commissioner Winters. Talk to the individual and get their consensus and whatever, like, for it to be brought back to us before we do budgets.
I wasn't quite, I was sort of delaying it another year, but you want to see it this year? I don't, I sort of thought...
It's delayed year after year after year.
Which is my decision.
Well, I thought that was towards the direction that Dan had mentioned.
My direction was, what Commissioner Shand said, go back to give a timeframe on it, how's the timeframe on it?
Okay, you want it before budget time?
Yeah.
Sounds good. Thank you for all your time. Is there anything else you want to do? Let's talk to the manager.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And, well, that's the one that triggered my whole thought. If that's wrapped into the budget or termies of budget, just their budget, not its own budget, then I guess it could work both ways, but that gives that budget some room. And then not always used for medical, autopsy, whatever, and they decide they want my some of the material and services here, and they absorb it and spend it. So, I've always been supportive of that one being separate. And if it goes over, then we care about it, we add more money to it.
But on the same token, typically, when people come to me thinking they're going to have an over expenditure, I look for ways to save money in their department first. Can you save money in another line item? Can you save money here? Can we transfer dollars from salaries? Sometimes these small, teeny tiny departments that are kind of, you know, out alone, their only option is contingency. That's it. So, I like managers having to make a choice, a decision.
So, we haven't had, we haven't had to go to contingency on that one for quite some time.
No, because we're now doing some more accurate budgeting, which then leads to the fact, well, let's put it in the, it would be okay. There wouldn't be that scenario of over/under because we're going to do a bit more accurate budgeting.
We, we may disagree because I have seen managers that spend down to nothing at the end of the year with some departments because they can't not have carryover for the next year. So, this is a way to stop all that one particular thing. You know your exact cost and they can't, if it's in the materials and service, spend it all out at the end of the year.
So, all these budget items, we're now agreed we're going to delay today, but we're going to make a decision before budget time. Some may go to general fund, some may not.
Right. Or, a nice thing, have a quote.
You guys know me, I'm going to ask some questions. Does it make sense to do something different?
So, just for clarification, so, we're going to communicate with Anne about a fund that may or may not affect us. And then, is the expectation to come back in and, and give our interpretation of where we're at? Or, I'm just asking, is everybody going to be back in here when we make that?
I think you're hitting on a good point because keeping in, in line with, sometimes we get frustrated because it seems like, frustrated's probably a bad word, but the ownership needs to come from the department and is the messenger a lot of times, and the budget officer and the treasurer and everything else. But I think it's important when we have these discussions that those who manage those funds are in attendance so we can have the discussion and it's not, everybody's just not counting on Anne to deliver their message. So, yes.
So, on assumptions, do we need to, we got built at 645, unappropriated income balance 925, 925,000, contingency 200,000, COLA 2.6, facilities for reserve 175, rolling fair board reserve 4655, 4,655. And then, from down...
On site, 10,000.
On site, 10,000.
And then, no others.
No others. And then courthouse basement will be rolled into the budget. And fairgrounds are going forward with open request of 30,000 for more information. And that's pretty much got it. Maybe more discussion on admin fees. Did I miss anything, Anne?
Nope, that's what mine would say.
You, you asked for more, the presentation from the managers on what projects are going to continue and why.
Oh, yes. All right, so we'll move. That's it for budget assumptions. We have one more addition.
How long is the addition going to take?
A long time.
Start the discussion.
Take a few minutes breaks.
It looks like it.
Thank you.
I think he had to go to the board.
Oh, there's one. Uh, we had Mr. Schuberger step in to our meeting, and then meet with us individually. I don't, not sure if you got Commissioner Kessler. But I went ahead and told him I put an addition on today. It's about the ski hill and the insurance, and the shortfall that they have with the ski hill right now. They came to us, and they opted not to request any money at this time. Things have changed for the short term. The, uh, the insurance companies requiring a $3,500 payment. That will be reimbursed to the ski hill. And so, um, with that, I think it would be very freeing of us to do a short-term loan to the ski hill, uh, the community development loan fund of $3,500 for discussion. And with action if we can do it. I wanted Ann to be in here because she manages that fund. And then, this would be, um, without going to the advisory group. And this would be just a short-term, uh, loan. So, Ann, is it possible, and I know I'm hitting you cold with this, we sort of got hit cold with this morning.
Um, absolutely, it's possible. The policy allows Commissioner discretion on these dollars. The Commissioner, or the policy even states that you can grant as well. So, I would ask, does it make sense to grant instead of loan?
Well, then, that's worth having the discussion over. That's now probably brought forward. And it's, we, we've asked them to, we've asked them to look at, um, an open request for this next year. So, um, I'm, I'm open for any discussion.
And I talked to Barry about that just really briefly. And all they simply wanted was to cover an unexpected request for insurance that they will then, as Commissioner Winters said, get reimbursed. I, I went the same place. I think we need to have a little bit bigger plan than just the 3,500. So, I think that'd make it really clean. We just do that, they're, when they get their check, they reimburse. And then we look at the bigger.
Okay.
Chip for reporting. The ski hill could not open, there was no, but had to pay insurance. And it eats away at their very big budget, and it kind of, it's a press point. So, I, I'll, I'll make a motion to loan Fremont Highlanders $3,500, a short-term loan to be repaid as they get the reimbursement. And for that to happen by the end of the day, if it's possible, the payment has to be before the end of the day. Has it been a contract made up?
Do we have, can we do this? Do we have to have a contract?
Is that, or is it an answer?
Yeah, I'd like to have some kind of agreement in writing.
So, I'm right middle of the motion, so I better stop the motion before we go into discussion. But I'll rescind my motion.
Typically, you have the motion, and then you have to discuss it.
Yeah, but my motion should include a contract, if, if, if that's what I see. So, I remember, I'll bring my motion back and have discussion about this. So, we, motion would need to include a contract that needs to be signed.
If it's a loan, if you actually have a little bit more flexibility to grant. But yeah, if it's a loan, repayment terms, interest rate, due date.
Yeah, have a loan, it's just how bad you have paperwork to track.
So, I'll make a motion for a short-term loan, interest-free, and have a very, um, general contract put together with Fremont Highlanders that be repaid, repaid upon receipt of the reimbursement. Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion?
Is there a timeframe that we need to get that agreement, contract together?
I'd like to have a date, with our date is even longer than what we think, so be it. I'd rather have a date that it's repaid by September 1st or something like that.
Well, there's two dates. Uh, one is, how soon do they need it? Like, this afternoon?
I heard today, yeah.
Their, their payment is due by the end of February, so, um, so that's a date, uh, in my motion to, um, be paid back by September 1st. Is that, that's another budget here, is that okay, Ann?
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah. Three seconds.
My second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Uh, with that, we will adjourn.
Wait a minute, I got a tidbit of legislation yet.
Um, with that, we will listen to Mr. Kessler.
Uh, there's a House Bill 2501, sponsored by Representative Richet and Senator Richet. Have you guys seen that yet?
2501, what's it for?
It's, uh, making, it came out of Barry Point Power history of it's, I think it, it's a good bill. Basically, uh, it addresses private lands that have burned, a good thousand, thousand acres. That ODM or Department for, has to, a report has to be made along with your other expenditures and everything of private lands, or over a thousand acres. Just to capture capability.
I read some, you seen the newspaper?
Yeah, and I didn't, I haven't researched it. Are you, want me to do a letter?
No, it's a brain technology.
Okay, I didn't know the impact that would have on, on the, I have, I just saw it in the paper the other day. I don't have a chance to research myself, but it's, it came out of Barry Point Power.
Yes.
There's also a Senator 32 on natural gas and utilities. Uh, basically, it's directing the Public Utility Commission to establish a work group. And the work group would be made up of various utilities, representatives of natural gas, one state senator, and one, uh, state representative. And it's to address how can we get pipeline natural gas farther out into communities? Same thing that we're doing. Unfortunately, it doesn't have a sunset date until September 2016, so it's, but I've been communicating with AOC. We need more than, well, first I said, let's get a Eastern Oregon representative per senator on there. Because our extension of the pipeline is of much greater magnitude in cost and mileage. And it would be for going outside the city limits of Eugene. And they came back and said, well, in addition to Eastern Oregon representative senator, they, uh, they want to push having an Eastern Oregon commissioner on that work group also. So, let's see. Yes.
Generally, and on the west side, there's enough population that a utility will come in, and they get developed on Eastern Oregon's where the challenge generally goes to, but not always.
And if even on the west side, it'd be a little, but need a, or some smaller community. I just don't want it heavily laden to that emphasis, but to incorporate our interests.
Is that your idea? We'll adjourn at 20 minutes to one. Thank you.